Okay, we'll call meeting order. We'll have a pledge and prayer of our councilmember Michael Proctor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father God, thank you so much for this blessed community. We ask your wisdom and your guidance on our meeting this evening. And we ask for your direction. All these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Okay. Approval of the agenda? Motion by Larry.
Second.
Second by Sarah. All in favor?
All in.
We dropped H four. We dropped H four, the review for our storm response and snow removal. That will be presented at the next conference.
You have a motion still? Motion by Larry.
Second.
Second by Sarah. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Citizen comments? Anybody from the audience that would like to speak for three minutes? I would say, state your name.
Yep. Jamie Blueball, 2226 East Ridge Court. I come before you today, I'd like to thank you guys for removing the press release on August 5th, 2020, that I had resigned as elected mayor on August 3rd, 2020. As a private citizen, the press release was on the homepage for 15 months until today. I would like the same reciprocity to the current appointed mayor Hunter Larkin with the current recent arrest and charge and suspicion of DUI this last weekend as a press release. On the current issue with the developer assistance, I stand today speaking against the development moving forward that requires or requests any financial assistance or upgrades to current infrastructure. It is a known practice for most of these developments to be self-sufficient. Developer money, equity, and special assessments should be used for this. The city should not be a money outlet for developers and not drain money from our citizens that would like to see more community-based improvements. Sedgwick County, including Goddard, has had numerous single-family home and duplex neighborhoods that have not needed financial assistance from local governments for a successful development. I reject the idea that Mayor Larkin does not have anything to do with the current development at 215th and 23rd. It's understandable that he stepped away due to his relationship with the current landowner. However, I think he is merely making it look good and recusing himself and stepping out last, the last meeting. I'm sure the city was not approached by the developer and the charge was led by Mayor Larkin. When, this is when a community goes downhill, when the elected has the opportunity to make money on their own interest. Furthermore, I don't believe our strategic plan or the wishes of citizens desire a neighborhood full of rental duplexes and storage units. I believe the city needs to put more focus on existing infrastructure in Old Town, parks, and green spaces. The city has a beautiful piece of North Parkland that has no active plans. The park board, which I know COVID, but has been inactive for two years, I believe the city administrator doesn't care about a project, it goes on the back burner. With the state having a $1.3 billion surplus, I'm certain that the 2020 session will eliminate the grocery tax, which our budget is heavily relied on. The city may see a loss of $300,000 to $500,000. Please, be thoughtful when giving away the city's money to private developers. I plan to see all of you more at these meetings and I appreciate what all you do for the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blueball. Appreciate your comments. Is there anything from my, our legal team or our city staff that would like to say anything in regards to the comments?
Other than the fact that staff was routinely approached by the former mayor regularly for assistance with residential development herein in this conversation and his comments this evening, it's a little shocking. The fact also that staff by the former mayor was directed to include projects that would serve the city of Wichita is again rather shocking. An individual can stand before the governing body and say anything. And we have folks in this room, at this table, that had to deal with the shenanigans of someone standing up, promising stuff, saying one thing to one person, one thing to another. Where staff was stuck trying to navigate the perils of promises and empty promises and directing us to find money here and find money there, directing staff to look at this person or, hey, look the other way on that person. We currently have everything going at the staff level very good. And I feel like we treat everyone equitably. We have a financial concern and we can't keep promising everything to everyone. And that is why I believe staff has worked cooperatively with this council to move the community forward and do so in a fiscally prudent way for which we're still paying for the promises and commitments of past actors.
Okay. Is there any other comments? Saying none, we'll move on to the next item. Consent agenda? I don't know.
Make the motion to approve the consumer's.
Motion by Larry.
Second.
Second by Sarah. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right. Item G1. I'm gonna step out for this, all right? Brian, can you move it to give me?
Yes. Item G1 is a receiver request for assistance in development participation from ICT Development for platting of 88 acres located at the northeast corner of 215th Street West and 23rd Street South. On October 4th, the city council reviewed and discussed creating a city infrastructure policy to ease the burden of future water system and wastewater plant expansion by population growth. At that meeting, we discussed a plant equity fee and a benefit fee. The plant equity fee being applied to new development to access pre-existing, pre-constructed infrastructure with the equity fees being recouped by the special assessment statutes in process, with the equity fee not being allowed for the application of special assessments. So, the long and the short is the plant equity fee is for pre-existing, accessing the plant expansions where the benefit fee is for extending water and sewer mains into an area to meet that growth. And then the folks that tap into that then pay the benefit fee. On October 18th, the city council received a request from ICT Development to finance a $600,000 lift station. The city council directed staff to analyze the developer's request because it had arrived the day prior to the agenda going out. So that Friday is when staff received that request forwarded to the governing body. On November 1st, the city council tasked staff to identify the fiscal impact of contributing $100,000 to oversize a 12-inch water line, which is something similar that we had done with Elk Ridge and some other developments. So, this would be essentially a cost participation in a 12-inch water supply line that would meet future growth along the 215th street here. And then this would be 23rd, and here's our existing infrastructure already in place. This is the proposed development with the north side being, north of the trail being here, 215th north to Kellogg on the top, with 23rd on the left-hand side, and the existing empty field in Clark-Davidson over here on the lower right-hand corner. And what the proposal would be, would be to bring the 12-inch water supply line down to the north entrance at which time, through the special assessment process and the internal petitionings would stub into that access point. If this is something that the city council would like to do as far as the oversizing, again, not participating in anything internal to this development. Staff recommends one of two options, the first being encumbering $25,000 for the next four years or utilizing general fund cash balance of $100,000 one time. Essentially, both of these scenarios are increasing the transfer amount from the general fund to the capital improvement fund. This would be codified, if you will, in the petitions for the primary mains to that development. Are there any questions of the city engineer, the finance director, or myself at this time?
I talked to Harland a little bit ago. Upsizing the pipe, the way the figures look there, if we increased it from eight to 12, would come to less than $40,000. And if we ran that pipe to connect it in a loop, it would be probably around $50,000. I don't know, I guess what I'm looking at is that that development only needs one pipe to service it, and so for us forcing them to make two connections is sort of a little bit harder, harder for the development just to please us. But I think if, if we could get that upsized to 35,000 to 40,000 and then turn around and have them offer in that same contract where they're doing that pipe work to finish that loop for us, we could get that job done cheaper. And get them both done at the same time, that would save us money and that would help sort of that development as far as looping it. And we can get our money back on that loop and on the oversizing through the benefit fees.
In the future?
Any future development come along, we can get our money back on that. And so it really won't end up costing the citizens anything. When future development pops in, we'll recollect that money. But if we don't have a fair amount of cost, it's double or triple with that pipe in.
Well, and we anticipate our growth ideally occurring more along 215th because that's in what's been defined as our natural growth area. As anything east of 183rd requires negotiating an agreement with rural water, which we're currently in the process of trying to have a standing agreement in place. But growth in this area does not necessitate that. So having sufficient pipe size for growth is important as we proceed down 215th.
We did. I would want to make sure that we kept track of all the bookkeeping on that to make sure that we paid for the upsizing and no more.
And just like with what we did with Elk Ridge, it would be essentially handled within the petition process and when we go to bid, it's bid for a 12-inch.
And that it would not exceed a $100,000 period regardless.
And that's however you guys want that structured, we were tasked with fiscal impact of $100,000 for water maintenance and oversizing. So, if you want to do less than that, that's certainly preferable.
It could cost less than that. I mean, we, that's why I'm saying, keep track of the book here because if it costs less than that, then that's good for us.
Yes, sir. And we'll know at the bids what that is and how that is.
And I might say, Brian, that's one thing I mentioned to Larry is, I'd like if the city is going to bring that water line from Walnut over to the develop, I'd like that bid with the other line of water work because the economy's of scale.
Scale, yeah.
We'll get, we'll get a better price on that water line, so.
So, Harland, do you foresee us needing that infrastructure likely one way or the other, and this is the best way to go about it?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think from the get-go, you know, I'd said that we need to, we need to loop that water line just for, you know, in case you have a break and this is another way to bring water in.
So it's not totally down, yeah?
Right, right. You have another way to bring not only domestic service, but fire service, fire protection and that. So it's always a good idea to have a system looped like that for pressure inflow.
If the line broke on one place and then they had a fire, we'd have no way to put it out.
Is that, is that what you were talking about though, was just doing one instead of looping it?
Well, I was thinking of one until I started looking at the numbers this week. It seemed that the numbers would, if they were what I thought they were, would allow that loop for that $100,000.
Okay. So you're fine with it?
I think that that's probably the only way to go, and I think that we'll get our money back.
Yeah, yeah. I trust the city staff's analysis on that.
But how we want to do it, with the $25,000 for years, I guess that would be, I guess, whatever you guys want.
I would recommend keeping your costs down, and I'll defer to Matt as far as the exact sequencing, but you're not paying any issuance or interest.
We have budget authority next year and we have sufficient cash to make the payment all at once. To encumber the funds for four years would probably require us to possibly attempt noting, and I don't think it's worth it for that amount when we have the cash. And essentially what we'd do is we would, when we do our amended budget during the budget process next year, we would move additional money into transfers from general fund to capital improvement fund and reduce the amount of our discretionary capital outlay line item. So it's, I mean, we have sufficient budget authority with that capital outlay line item to do it. It's just a, you know, budget amendment, but not even an amendment, it's just a budget revision that is part of the regular budget process.
So option two is?
I think that's probably the best choice if you're going to do it, yes.
As far as offering anything more, I don't like the idea that. Our city's never, never been one to go out and throw money at it. We got sort of in cornswallop on the last, last project we did. I don't like, I don't like being played twice. So, I think we just need to tighten up Els and watch, watch how we handle business and make sure that our money gets spent where we promised it. Well, I guess I'll make that, I guess I'll make that recommendation. Do you need to be of a form of a motion?
Authorizing the transfer of $100,000 from the general fund, Fund 10, to capital improvement fund, Fund 90, for the oversize of a 12-inch water line to serve the ICT development along 215th and 23rd streets.
And looping.
Well, that's, yeah. They do the looping from their internals.
I don't know if it's important or not, but if we need to note that that will take place after the beginning of 2022 fiscal year.
Yeah. Which, we wouldn't have the debt issued until then, I proceeded next month, so we're good.
Larry, is that a motion?
Yeah.
I'll second option two because it does seem to be in alignment with what we've been talking about and how to go about this.
And this is what we've done along 199th and to serve Elk Ridge as well for both water ends, so.
Right.
Okay. I guess, well, can I?
Call for a vote.
Well, can I make the motion since I'm in charge?
As the president, he can.
Okay. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries?
And who seconded that? Just?
I did.
Okay, thank you.
Wait for the mayor to come back.
Okay. Proceed.
This is item H1. I'm the mayor in city council. This is a special use application for restaurant and bar at 401 East Industrial Road. A quick background, the property owner of 401 East Industrial Road has submitted an application for a special use for about 2,000-plus square feet of the interior of the building. The application is for a restaurant and bar at the location where the previous tenant was in supplement HQ. Subdivision regulations require special uses to be treated the same manner as a rezoning. Application which requires both approval from the planning commission and approval from the city council. Planning commission approved the special use on 11/8/2021 contingent upon legal review for special uses and limitations being presented to city council. So we'll go over some of the legal qualifications that if the city council wanted to add on as provision, they could. City code and state law both have different provisions for handling liquor sales and consumption. These will have to be taken into account by the property owner. Letters were sent out to every property owner within 200 feet of the property as is required for publication purposes and for notification purposes within city limits and 1,000 feet outside city limits for a comment. Subdivision regulations respect to land use supply as well as city and state code related to liquor and cereal malt beverages. So we're going to go into this a little bit, and feel free to stop me anytime if you guys have any questions related to either liquor licenses, land uses, special use zoning, or anything else, and I'll be happy to answer those questions, so. Today, you're going to be reviewing a special use application of 2,000-plus square feet for restaurant bar located at 401 East Industrial Street. Definitions, our city code defines alcoholic liquor, alcoholic beverage means alcohol, spirits, wine, beer, and every solid or liquid that's been patented or not containing alcohol, spirits, wine, or beer and capable of being consumed as a beverage for a human being, but shall not including any cereal malt beverages. And cereal malt beverages are beer commonly referred to as beer, means any fermented but undistilled liquor brewed or made from malt or from a mixture of malt or malt substitute that is not including any such liquid which is more than 3.2% alcohol by weight. So what the property owner is asking for, and these are different types of businesses or classifications for liquor licenses, what they're hoping to do is have a drinking establishment, I put that in orange just so you can kind of delineate between all of them. They're asking specifically for a drinking establishment, which means a premise which may be open to the general public, where alcoholic liquor, by the individual drink is sold. That's kind of different from a Class A club or Class B or general retailer or elevated retailer. So restrictions on location, our code basically emulates the state, which says you can't be within 200 feet of a church, a school, a nursing home, a library, or a hospital. And it has to be measured from the nearest property line to property line. No person shall sell or retail any alcoholic liquor or cereal malt beverage in any area zone higher than commercial, which basically means that residential is off limits, so commercial, industrial, or anything else that falls in between those categories would be considered acceptable. No license premise shall be issued for the sale of alcoholic liquor or cereal malt beverages ability or use to zone me the zoning ordinance requirements of the city or conflicts in your city laws, including building and health codes. So they explicitly prohibit it and want to be acceptable as a special use. In this particular case, a special use, there's no definition in industrial district as being explicitly prohibitive or inclusive, so it falls under what's called a special use, which means it just is going to have to be reviewed by planning commission and ultimately by city council, so at your discretion. So this is the location of it, and as you can see, I put a little 200-foot buffer around it for kind of easy reference. Industrial Road right here, this is Goddard right there, Goddard Road. And this little orange square is the property, and the special use would be kind of contained within this area inside the building. And so as you can see here, the school is over here, and no school down here, but there's no hospitals or churches or anything else. This, I believe the building itself used to operate as a school building once upon a time, but no longer. It's obviously been zoned industrial for that reason. Mine is on premises, so the state and city code reflects this. It shall be unlawful for any person under the age of 21 years to remain on any premise where the sale of alcoholic liquor is licensed for on-premise consumption or where a temporary permit holder has served alcoholic liquor. Shall be unlawful for the operator, person in charge, or licensee of any premise licensed for on-premise consumption of alcoholic liquor, a temporary permit holder who is serving alcoholic liquor to permit any person under the age of 21 years to remain on premise. This section shall not apply if the person under the age of 21 is accompanied by his or her parent or guardian, or if the license or permitted premise derives not more than 30% of the gross receipts in each calendar year from the sale of alcoholic liquor for on-premise consumption.
Mike?
Yes. Yep.
Okay, so.
One, two, or three?
Three.
Okay.
As long as he sells 71% food, teenagers can go there without their parents?
Yes. Because they're going to be, yeah. Just like Ginger's Asian cuisine can go in there, minors are allowed to be in there, purchase food as long as it's less than 30%, yeah.
Okay. Just making sure.
Mm-hmm. Good question, yeah. So hours of operation, there shall be no serving, mixing, or consumption of alcoholic liquor or cereal malt beverage on the licensed premise between 2:00 a.m. and 6:00 a.m. That's a, that's a state law, so we have to abide by that state law across the board. Concealed carry of weapons by patrons, so obviously we're in Kansas, concealed carry and unconcealed carry is generally allowed in most buildings unless you implicitly say it's not allowed. And drinking establishments are elected to sort of prohibit any concealed or unconcealed weapons on their premise, but they have to put a sign up that says specifically, can't bring any guns inside the building, basically, and they're allowed to do that. So if they want to enact that, they would have to make the sign be readily transparent, like a big sign that says no guns allowed in the building, so. Restriction on employees, all persons who are serving alcohol or cereal malt beverages must be at least 18 years old. However, any server who is under the age of 21 must be supervised by a person who is at least 20 years old. So all these laws and regulations are pretty standard across the board, any place you go, obviously in the state of Kansas, state has its own laws and regulations. Every state varies, but Kansas is pretty straightforward. If you go to an Applebee's, or if you go to 12 off of Maple, that restaurant, or any other restaurants like that, it's all going to be generally the same. If they're under 18, they can be served, but they have to be supervised. And generally, if you order food, then you're going to have the bartender come out and give you the alcoholic drink, the same thing across the board, so. No person connected with dispensing, mixing, serving alcoholic liquors, and you can have a conviction or a felony of any crime involving moral charges in Kansas. So if you have a felony, you're not allowed to be employed in a, in a establishment that serves alcoholic liquor. So this is a surplus and leakage analysis. So we did sort of an internal economic analysis that kind of looked at, was there a demand for this? Is there something, are we missing out on a potential market opportunity here? And so what we did is we looked at a 2007 industry group classification on different types of businesses. And surplus and leakage basically means that if, in a trade area, if you're losing money into another trade area, that's leakage. Surplus means that people are coming from outside of your trade area into your trade area to purchase goods or services. And so what we were generally looking at is food services and drinking places, specialty food services, drinking places, alcoholic beverages, restaurants, and other eating places. Green means surplus, so what we're seeing is that a lot of people are coming into Goddard to either buy groceries or to shop at, or to eat at Ginger's or different restaurants of that nature, or whatever we have around the area. But we have a general lack for drinking. But we have a general lack for drinking places and alcoholic beverages. Now, that being said, it's not saying that if the special use is approved, all of a sudden, we're going to see an increase of $435,000 into the city. This just means that we have a market loss of about 435,000. Perhaps this would be able to capture some of that loss, and that's what this is saying. Financially, small publication cost per state law, legally speaking, we did speak with the legal attorneys on this matter, per the planning commission's requirement, they wanted city council to be fully aware of their options, so special uses are intended to be treated as permanent uses. So that was sort of a question that came up during the planning commission, and they are very similar to a conditional use, they run with the property. So if the property was sold, they stay with the property. They don't go with the property owner. If the property owner sells it and moves to a different state or different city, for whatever reason, he doesn't carry the special use with him in his pocket, it stays at the property. So there is nothing, though, that would prevent the city, city council, the governing body, from conditioning the use on ownership being the same or setting a specific time. So basically, what it is saying here is that if you approve the special use, you could put some contingencies in there that the special use would expire if the property is sold, or the special use could expire after a certain amount of time, let's say five years or 10 years, if you wanted to take that into consideration. There is nothing that prohibits the governing body from putting that in there as a provision of acceptance for this condition, for the special use. Ordinance is approved, asked to form. It is recommended that the governing body approve the ordinance for the special use for the restaurant bar at the location 401 East Industrial Street. It would be an ordinance, so you would first have to waive the reading of the ordinance with the motion, and then approve the ordinance with motion second, and then the roll call as, as per usual. So, questions, comments on this? And if not from me, then I will invite Mr. Jordan Ungles up as the property owner to answer any questions you might have about it.
I want to clarify two things.
Yes.
So if the property does sell down the road, the new owner has to reapply, or has to apply for their liquor license with us. Liquor licenses do not transfer, it has to. Mr. Ungles would be the owner of the liquor license.
Yes, right.
Somebody else would have to get the new liquor license.
Right.
We could then deny it if?
You could.
And?
Yeah.
If a new owner takes over the building and they want to change it to just a bar, they are not allowed to do that because it's not zoned for that, correct?
Zoning for a bar, that'd be a little bit different, because it's not zoned for a bar now, it's not so.
But if we approved this, it wouldn't be zoned for just a bar?
Not necessarily. It would still have to be, this is considered a restaurant and bar, so the provision of it being a bar across the board where it just serves alcohol predominantly is like greater than 30%, at that point, they probably would have to consider another special use.
They would have to come, right.
Right. And if you were concerned about that, you could say that when Mr. Ungles sells the property or, you know, releases it for whatever reason, then that the special use expires with Mr. Ungles.
Okay, just to address the planning commission's concern regarding that. Those were two things that came to mind that would prevent what they're concerned could happen from happening.
Yes, certainly. And the planning commission, the planning commission did approve it across the board unanimously, they just were thinking that down the road, for whatever reason, if there wanted to be any provisions, and the reason that came up is because conditional uses have been coming up pretty recently in the county, and planning commission's been reviewing a lot of these conditional use permits, even though the final say is by the board of county commissioners for these conditional use permits in the county. The county legal team said that conditional use permits can expire, which was sort of a new phenomenon to me as a planner, because typically, conditional uses run perpetuity, and so, but the legal team of MABCD and Wichita said that they can expire, they can have a time limit. And so then the question came up with our, with our legal team, well, can special uses expire? Can we put extra provisions in there? And they said, yes, that's at the, at the will of the governing body. If special use doesn't have to run perpetuity with the property, it can expire after a certain amount of time, if you so choose, or it could expire with the property owner, if you so choose. So that's just something to take into account.
Jordan, would you like to say a few words?
Yeah. Done with Mike?
Okay.
Yeah.
We're never done with you.
Didn't want to rush, didn't want to rush. Well, obviously, thank you for letting me come up here today. I'll try to be brief, might hit a lot of phenomenal points already, so. Just to, I think there's been somewhat of a misconception or a miscommunication perhaps as far as really what it is that we're trying to create within this great community. So really, just to kind of put it in simple terms, is we're trying to create a locally-owned, sourced, built, Applebee's-type of restaurant that the entire Goddard community could be proud of. To be somewhat cheesy, kind of a local Cheers, right, that parents can bring in their entire family to enjoy, really a place where local business owners can bring clients in to help close potential deals, or to bring their staff in to help celebrate successes even. A restaurant where, you know, parents can get a babysitter on a Saturday night and can actually go out on a date night in their hometown, which isn't something that we have right now. So with having multiple businesses in Goddard, myself, I firmly believe in the rising tide lifting all ships. So that said, I'll be working directly with local businesses, namely Stroot Locker, which is a Goddard staple, has been for decades, to source all of our meat and our food supplies, as well as working with local contractors to finish off, you know, the obvious work that'll have to be done within the building to have it ready to go. Obviously, like I mentioned, with multiple businesses, including two of my own, sharing that space that the restaurant will be going into, we'll continue to work diligently as we have since I originally bought the property from the interlocal day school. I don't know if some of you were probably involved when I first bought that. It was overgrown, it was a mess over there, it was that real nice orange baby pew color. So obviously, I take a lot of pride in my spaces, I take a lot of pride in my building, so we'll continue to work diligently to make sure the exterior continues to look nice, including the parking lot. And then also with that, you know, by understanding fully and following completely all local, state, and federal laws regarding liquor sales and distribution, and obviously, working closely, hopefully, with the local PD to ensure that we never have a situation within our facility that is going to bring, you know, a potential problem to the city. Our team has no desire to cater to the 2:00 a.m. crowd, that's not what my staff is interested in working with. So with that in mind, it's, we're trying to have a concerted effort to reduce as much of that potential issue as possible. So by that, our hours are going to be 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., Monday through Thursday, and then it will be 11:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., Friday and Saturday. Once again, we're not interested in, in just that crowd. Trying to get, obviously, anybody who would fall into that category out of town before they potentially, you know, started a problem. With the proposed additions that we plan on making to our parking lot, our on-property stalls will be 60 parking spots. Any overflow parking, if it were needed, could flow down industrial, as our busy hours, which would be post 5:00 p.m., will be after closing time for most of those businesses on that street. Now, obviously, one restaurant is not going to make up a $453,000, or a $435,000 leakage, but I think obviously, any little bit helps. And I think anything that's going to be bringing, you know, folks down into more of our, call it old-town area, I think is just going to benefit all parties involved. So that's kind of the hope, that's kind of the goal, that's really what we're trying to create, that's, that's what we're trying to, to get to.
Mr. Ungles, thank you so much for putting in a lot of work. I know you've been working with Mike very hard.
Mike is probably tired of chatting with me, but.
But you've invested a lot of time and money in Goddard, and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
And I am completely in support of this. I think this is something that the city of Goddard needs, and the business community needs it. And I think you're going to be open for lunch, so that industrial area will.
Absolutely, absolutely.
That'll serve that whole area.
Yep.
So I'm in complete support of it. The planning commission already approved it unanimously, so I'll leave it up to the rest of the council if you guys have any questions.
Can I ask you a question? Is there, there isn't going to be any live music or anything going on there?
We don't plan on having regular live music. I'm not saying that we would never have a band, ever. That said, if we did, bands most times play from 9:00 to 11:00, so they, and it would be indoors, so it would still be prior to, you know, no band wants to be playing at 12:30 at night. I mean, they want to get home and be done this week.
Well, I'm concerned about the noise in the neighborhood as far as emanating from the building. Would it bother that people living across the street and so on, if bands were playing at 11 o'clock at night?
Well, once again, it's not something that we plan on doing all the time. It would be a rare occasion.
Just like with anything, with the ball field.
Right, with the ball fields, with, you know, Fall Fest, with, with anything like that, there are the rare occasions where, where you may be able to hear.
Yeah, gotcha. Move on. And so if that was the situation, and you could definitely hear it in the neighborhood or whatever, even though it was inside, is that still all under sound ordinance type stuff from a special?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Yeah, I'm still careful. Yeah, you can still have the nuisance ordinance, is that what it's called?
Okay.
Are you sure you can't make it fast food? You know, fast food.
I've been working diligently to ensure that it will not be fast food. We're, we're going to be bringing in a phenomenal cook.
Yeah.
Well, a lot of what I hear the community saying is that the fact that they wonder why we can't have a restaurant in our town, that we took out a restaurant.
Absolutely.
I, I don't know how many times I've been at the ball fields and people are visiting from other towns they're playing, and they're like, where?
Where do we go?
And it's like, well, there's fast food right here, or you can drive 10 minutes that way.
And don't get me wrong, I absolutely think that fast food serves a purpose.
It does.
I, I do. But the trouble is, with where our fast food is all located, it does nothing to bring anyone into, into the inner part of our city, which, if you're wanting to develop the main street, if you're wanting to bring more people in to see more of the shops, see more of the boutiques, see more, I mean, or to even know that there's things there.
The park.
Absolutely. Right, they have to drive right past the park. Absolutely. Which I think, the more eyes that we can get on Old Goddard, I think the better. There's a lot of misconception as far as you drive, if all you do is drive along 54, in my opinion, you have a very distorted view of Goddard. It, just in my opinion. And so I think if we can get people to understand that there's a lot more involved in this town, I think it's going to be a benefit.
The most common request I got, talking to the community as I was at Cantina and Door Knockin' or whatever it was, hey, what are the restaurants? We in one restaurant.
Right. And I think a lot of folks would take a lot of pride in having a local restaurant. Once again, change is great too, and I think there's time and place for that, but something that people can say that's ours and can take pride in. So when they ask, oh, you know, you have folks coming in and, you know, some ball team's up from Oklahoma City, and it's, oh, where do I got to go in this town? You know, what's the place? I think folks will take pride in being able to say, oh, you got to go right over here. It's fantastic.
Well, what do you guys want to do?
Mr. Mayor, if you would like to grant, we would need a motion to waive the reading of the ordinance. Okay, do I have a motion to waive the reading?
Make a motion to waive the reading of the ordinance.
Motion by Sarah. Second by Michael. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Make a motion to approve the ordinance.
Motion by Sarah.
Is there a way where we could put it in, into the ordinance where if he sells the property, that this gets brought back with force or somebody wants to?
Well, keep in mind that the liquor license, you have a built-in stopgap with that as well.
It's already listed.
Because they can't sell.
Right, the liquor license wouldn't extend with it.
Right.
So even if you were to sell the property, sell the business, that new owner's going to have to come back before the council to request a brand-new liquor license in that new owner's name. And so you'll always have that check on.
So second on that. Second by Michael. All in favor, roll call.
Councilmember Zimmerman?
Yes.
Councilmember Leland?
Yes.
Mayor Larkin?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Proctor?
Yes.
NIBI ordinance 878.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for having your business in town.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Welcome to stay for the rest of the morning.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you.
Honorable governing bodies, so this is a recent proposal from the Goddard Chamber regarding the Christmas on Main Street event on Saturday, December 4th, and a request for fireworks. So Christmas on Main Street is a yearly occurrence in the city with participation for various community, community events or community groups. So the event's going to be Saturday, December 4th, from, I believe, around?
2:00?
From 4:00 to 7:00.
Okay, sorry about that. 4:00 to 7:00. The fireworks show is expected to last around five minutes, between the times 6:30 and 8:00, 8:00 p.m. We added that hour and a half window to give them a little cushion. The Goddard Chamber is, is going to be managing that fireworks show. The last public event where we had fireworks would have been on August 13th at the National Night Out event. So city staff and I believe the Chamber are going to inform the Cedric County Fire Department of this upcoming show. So the fireworks show will be hosted by Victory Pyrotechnics and Shot in the West End of Liner Park. Victory Fireworks have been in business for four years and served various towns in Kansas. Victory is providing the insurance with event sponsors listed as the city of Goddard and the Goddard Chamber. So under the ordinance, typically, we're not allowed to shoot fireworks, but the governing body at its discretion may grant permission for a public's display of fireworks for certain events. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, take any comments.
I have no personal problem with it. You guys? Nope, no problem here. Okay. I have a motion. I have a motion to approve the discharge of fireworks between 6:30 and 8:00 p.m. on Saturday, December 4th. Motion by Mike.
Second.
Second by Brent. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay.
So this is corrections to the 2021 UPOC ordinance. So Goddard annually adopts revisions to the Uniform Public Defense Code. The UPOC is a uniform code derived from Kansas statutes and includes local amendments adopted by the city council each year. So the proposed ordinance includes only local amendments previously approved by the governing body, and the UPOC has been reviewed by the city prosecutor, the chief of police, and the city administrator. So the 2020 edition of the UPOC was adopted on September 21st, 2020. And then in September 20th, 2021, we adopted this, and upon review, several errors were identified in the past in published ordinance. So if you refer to your agenda packets, I believe the very first section, there's an ordinance related to vaping or the sale of vaping devices that was left out of the ordinance, and then the Time Sentinel had a mishap on, on publication there. So this is just coming back and cleaning things up. So these amendments will include, in the proposed ordinance, will maintain the city's compliance with applicable Kansas statutes while addressing local concerns. So the police department is responsible for the enforcement of the UPOC, and they all carry a copy on their person or in their vehicle. So the ordinance must be published again in the official paper of record, Time Sentinel. There must be at least three copies on file with the city clerk, and again, the police officers are issued a copy. So a small publication cost, again, to get that back in the Time Sentinel, and we have reviewed this ordinance in depth, and our prosecutor took another look at it, and we believe it's, it's good to go. So at this point, we would take a recommendation to adopt the proposed ordinance, adopting the 2021 37th edition of the Uniform Public Defense Code. Take any comments or questions?
Do I waive the reading? Or the motion?
The motion, we'll waive the reading.
Motion by Larry.
Second.
Second by Sarah. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Make a motion to consider the ordinance.
Motion by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Brent. All in, uh, roll call. All in, uh, roll call.
Councilmember Zimmerman?
Yes.
Councilmember Leland?
Yes.
Mayor Larkin?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Proctor?
Yes.
NIBI ordinance eight, seven, nine.
Thank you. And the Marion City Council. You see that this view of the Starbuck site looking back to the southwest with the, the hotel and Health Club with the childcare center. This elevated roof line is the water park with the concave roof line being the competitive swimming vineyard, with the most notable item being the pad here in front of the Health Just looking back to the south-southeast with the hotel, and then a little better view of the, the new drive approach that's been poured. Just highlighting our residential availability in our lots from the last quarter. Highlighting that we are in 75% fill now. Work continues in the area of Arbor Creek, including the community clubhouse area, and looking back toward Amelia Earhart and the Goddard campus athletic fields. Cloverleaf continues to flourish. We are currently in phase two, and that is rapidly filling out. And you see, the view on the right where they're pouring a new foundation. And you see some of the basement paths looking back to the south with Kellogg in the background and the Starbuck facility behind that. Elk Ridge, all the lots are sold, and now building is, is progressing, including this view here, looking back to the east, paralleling 23rd, I'm sorry, Maple to the right. Townhomes and Dove Estates, their second phase are going up for senior living. And Rustic Creek's underway with, you can see the placement of, looks like sewer pipe Just to remind everyone, we've got this Saturday, our community cleanup. Items that will not be allowed will be mattresses, batteries, paint and chemical cans, as well as appliances that contain Freon. Our spring cleanup will be in conjunction with Neighbors United in April of next year. Items in December, we'll have our, our multi-factor authentication compliance consideration on December 6th. We'll begin cleanup of the municipal code, which will proceed for the next few months. We'll have our public works director, Brooke Brandon, Brooke's presentation on our winter storm response and emergency snow routes. We'll begin discussion on the sign regulations. I have an update on the community center, what more we're at there, as well as the equity and benefit fee discussion. Also in December, we'll have the capital improvement budget for 2022 presented, and then the first two meetings in January, continuing with the goals for 2022. That concludes my report. If there are no questions for myself or staff.
Thank you.
Thank you. Larry?
Well, I would just like to say that I wanted to recognize Sue back there, her husband passed away, and I want to say that he will be missed, a lifelong resident of the City of Goddard, and, and I know that I will, I will miss him, and if there's anything that I personally appreciate, let me know, Sue. And I know that you have stand with him in our community, and been valuable citizens to our community, and that's something that I appreciate. So thank you. And also, I wanted to mention that in my 27 years on the council, there are very few exceptions that I feel like that the people I served have not had the best interest of the community at heart. Honesty say that each of us have made bad decisions, whether it be a business decision for the city or something in our lives, but that does not mean that we did not have the best interest of the city at heart, and I believe that when we see that there's something that has happened in our community, rather than us finding fault, we need to follow scripture and pray for the person, or persons that caused it and uplift them so that our community can be a better place to live. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Larry. Sarah?
Um, I just want to say a lot that we're moving forward with the zoning change, so we can probably get a restaurant gathering space in here soon. I know it affects some people that live close by, and they aren't necessarily for the establishment, but I hope that everybody can work together, and it isn't a disturbance to most people, and they can all respect each other. It can be a great place for Goddard community.
Thank you.
Mike? I am excited to see that there are entrepreneurs in the city that want to invest in Goddard. Yeah, I, I was curious, Brent, is the Starbuck district, is that, is that franking to be done by the end of the year? Do you have any update on that?
I, I think we anticipated occurring around March, April of 2025.
Okay. But yeah, as far as the restaurant goes, I'm, I'm super excited, because that was one of the biggest requests I, I got or I get from Goddardites. So I'm stoked.
Thank you, Michael. Brent?
You know, everybody said really good words tonight. Pheasant season was, you know, last weekend, and did anybody go pheasant? Did you go hunting? No? My golly, you need to get out once in a while. You want to go December 5th? Well, I'm going back out December 5th. Anybody wants to go? Want to go hunting?
Probably going to be worn out from the Christmas event.
Yeah. Okay. Larry? Want to dust it off?
No, I'm getting too old to walk that far.
We need walkers, too.
I got the dents, but I think I can do something.
Anyway. We, uh...
And the animals seem to know what I'm looking for.
But, uh, yep. So that was, that's kind of a holiday, holiday there, I think, and it should be a new holiday. But I saw where another city had an all-day Halloween, all day. They celebrated, and I think we are school, so let kids out for all-day Halloween, you know, it's all during the week. And they have a date after Halloween.
Congratulations on your city council election. Are you going to write your school board too?
An all-day Halloween would be nice. I could pass out candy all day long to them. Anyway, that was it, but thank you, everybody, tonight.
I can't say much more than everybody else has said. Thank you all for coming here tonight. Thank you to the city staff. I want to ditto to what Larry said. We have a good team here at the City of Goddard. We work together well. I'm very proud to call these people my colleagues, and I'm very proud to be able to work with them. I learn from them every time I get to see them, and we're going to do good things for the City of Goddard, so. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Sarah. Second by Michael. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.